Welcome to the 2017 Meet the City Council Candidates Forum. This is the second of our two-part series. My name is Dee Beaver. I'm the Head of Adult Services at the Salem South Lion District Library. It is the library's mission to educate, enrich, and empower our community, and this evening's event fulfills our mission. We would like to thank Dave and Deborah Neal, owners of Lion Theater, for hosting our event.[31.11][31.11][applause] The Hometown Newspapers for supporting our event, and Rich Perry for streaming the event for South Lion Channel 19.[41.19][41.19][applause] Our moderator tonight is Phil Allman, Consumer Experience Director, Observer in Eccentric Newspapers, and former editor of the South Lion Herald. Our timers and card takers are South Lion students Will Ray and Emma Loveland. The candidates for the position of South Lion City Council are Joyce Colosi, Glenn Kibble, Carl Richards, and Rose Walton. Neither Rose nor Carl will be here tonight as they have scheduling conflicts. The rules for the evening: Each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves, their qualifications, and why they're running to become a member of the City of South Lion City Council. Each candidate has received three pre-event questions before today's event. Each will be given one minute to respond to each of the three pre-event questions. Index cards will be available for audience members to write down their questions, and these questions will be read by the moderator. If you don't have a card but would like one, wave your hand, and Will will bring you a card. When you have finished your question and you want to turn it in, go ahead and raise your hand, and Will will come around and collect your cards. Questions should be addressed to all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. After all audience questions have been answered, each candidate will have one minute to make a concluding statement. Candidates, please be aware of our timer when responding to a question. The time will signal when you have five seconds left. In the interest of fairness and timeliness, please conclude your answer. The forum will be videotaped and streamed via South Lion Cable 19 and the library website at www.ssldl.info following the event. Good luck.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for having us here and coming out to learn more about the candidates for South Lion City Council. Both Rose and Carl did provide us some written statements, so I will read those for the pre-event questions as well as a brief introduction for them. But I will follow Glenn in those cases for reading those, and then for if Joyce is able to make it tonight, then she can just join in at the moment she gets there. So to start off, Glenn, just introduce yourself to the audience.
All right. Excuse me. My name's Glenn Kibble. My wife and I have lived in South Lion since '87. We moved here as newlyweds. That was right at the onset of the growth spurt of South Lion. We live in the downtown area, in a Victorian down there that made the little TLC. Both of us are appreciative of historic downtown, so it was really quite a nice little gift for us to be able to find a place like that. We've raised our three children in the city, and they've grown up to be wonderful, sweet, intelligent kids, so we're all quite proud of them. The reason I had always had a penchant for government, I'm not much into politics. I think that's kind of a -- it can be very disastrous, but nonetheless, I always enjoyed the idea of disposing government to the city and seeing how people convey their business. And so I, very early on, started attending city council meetings at the old city hall, which is now the Police Administration Building. Got my feet wet there, grew an understanding of how things were conducted here, got a feel for the people that were leading this community, and all earnest and well-intended people. Solely but surely, I ended up ultimately getting on Parks and Rec, and from there, I ended up having an interest in running for city council. I've been on for the majority of the time that we've lived in the city, so I've had some breaks in between, but I've watched an awful lot of the progression of how things have been dealt with in the city, and I still feel as though I've got something to contribute. I feel I'm somebody that listens quite well, and I'm certainly opinionated. Don't get me wrong, I'm not a pushover, but I do think that I think things through pretty clearly and come to a pretty reasonable and respectful conclusion, so here we are.
Okay, from Rose Walton. "My name is Rose Walton. I am a lifetime member of the South Lion community. I am a graduate of South Lion High School. My daughter's graduated from South Lion Schools as well. I am a small business owner with nineteen and a half years of financial banking experience. I serve as a director of my homeowner association. I am a member-at-large with Footprint Fitness, a local nonprofit that works toward increasing the fitness of our population, younger and older. I have a strong liking toward community involvement and very active and involved in our community." And from Carl Richards.[381.62][381.62]"I appreciate your invitation to this forum at the theater. I will not be able to attend due to a previous engagement. I am a semi-retired person, and over the last eight years, I have been a community activist advocating for stability and growth. I have lived in the South Lion area for most of my adult life and have been a regular voter. I am a regular speaker at city council and Planning Commission meetings during the call to the public. I bring forth community news sprinkled with positive comments regarding current events. I attempt to provide historical facts that can cast a light to how current events have evolved over the years. I have a thorough knowledge of the city and infrastructure layout. Behind the scenes, my overall focus has been to enlighten the administration on opportunities to save the city and taxpayers money, providing numerous ways to save resources and avoid costly infrastructure failures. I will stand behind everything I have said over the past five years at council and Planning Commission meetings. Many times, I have corrected my statements when new information becomes available to me. I do not profess to know everything, but I am a quick learner. I will endeavor to use this attitude if elected to council. My sole purpose is to represent the residents of South Lion to the best of my ability." And now for the three pre-event questions. One-minute response for each of these.[469.96][469.96]"No one takes a new responsibility knowing all that you need to know to do the job. What will you do to learn how to become an effective member of city council?"
Well, first, you need to ask an awful lot of questions. That's pretty key. Talking with department heads, the city manager, get a better understanding or the best understanding available of what issues and concerns might end up being. And once you have some kind of a feel for things, then you can make an honest assessment and weigh in on how you think that things might end up being best handled at that point. Relationships, I mean, it's no different than city council than it is in the real world. The idea of being respectful and honest, and there's no need to be confrontational, and yet, when that situation presents itself, you do need to end up responding accordingly. So, thank you.
Okay. Carl's response to the question about how to become an effective member of city council.[547.91][547.91]"I would keep my answers short and to the point, or as pertaining to the topic as possible." And Rose's response.[561.32][561.32]"I am very interested in our city budget to ensure financial stability. I have a background in banking and currently the treasurer of my condo complex. Budgets and numbers are very important to me. I intend to learn more about the enterprise funds in order to effectively analyze the city's budget. I am interested in reviewing pension issues and their impact on the city's budget going The second pre-event question.[592.87][592.87]"What do you consider the most pressing issues for South Lion in the next year, five years, and 10 years?"
Well, this year, budget discipline and establishing priorities, I think, is really critical. We've had a couple of years of sort of erratic budgeting, and I think we're suffering as a consequence of that, both in the fact that city council doesn't feel confident with the numbers, and that, I think, translates then the way that the community sees how we're operating. It doesn't put us on a good footing to be able to act in the best interests that we should be. Five years, the downtown parks, the downtown primarily like growing new businesses, the redevelopment of underutilized areas, compliance with landlords that have not been taking care of their properties. I have to admit that five-second or the one-minute thing seems a little bit ridiculous under the circumstances.[663.51][663.51][laughter] And the 10-year thing is essentially just an enhancement of that.
Rose's response.[677.98][677.98]"The most pressing issue of our city is, in the next five years, is the budget and getting the pension issues under control without the need to increase taxes. I strongly believe we need to be cognizant of our senior population, and I feel no tax group should be overburdened with taxes." Carl's response.[701.82][701.82]"Budget adjustments in view of declining revenues and leveling of future growth. I recognize that serious decisions need to be made regarding level of services to our residents as we attempt to hold costs and maintain budget stability. I am keenly aware of the large amount of growth in the surrounding townships and feel that we need a joint venture with the other municipalities whenever possible to provide services to all of the area residents in the most economical means possible." And for the third pre-event question.[738.07][738.07]"Effective communication is vital for local government. What will be your specific guidelines as you develop your lines of communication with the mayor, city staff, city council colleagues, and members of the community?"
Honest, respectful communication is always the priority, and it's not a matter of having a difference of opinion. I think differences of opinion are really critical to making sure that you haven't overlooked something that might end up being an important aspect of a decision to be made. But differences of opinion are a completely different story from people deliberately trying to mischaracterize situations or trying to demean people that -- if anybody's been watching the last couple of years of city council meetings, I think that it's pretty clear what I'm speaking to, so -- and I think that that needs to end up being responded to accordingly, not to go toe-to-toe with trying to bang on somebody, but you do need to give some clarity about what the real issues are.
Thank you, Glenn. In regards to communication, Carl Richards wrote.[823.25][823.25]"If I am chosen to represent the community, it is my goal to be the best possible listener at the council table. Provide a calm and steady voice and provide decisions based on the facts presented. I plan to ask as many questions as possible to the administration, city employees, and residents to become the most knowledgeable regarding the topics before me. I will always be available to the residents and business owners of the community." And from Rose Walton.[857.38][857.38]"I am a team player and can and will work with any member on council. I have great respect for the present city council members and city management. I will represent the interests of our senior citizens, South Lion families, and our entire community. I will represent you and continue to make our community a wonderful place to live." Okay, and now for our audience submitted questions. Glenn, you kind of touched on this before, so we'll start with this one.[886.13][886.13]"How do you maintain a calm demeanor in the face of name-calling and general disrespect?"
You act like a grown-up, I guess, is really the key, so that behavior just is really -- should be foreign to the city council chamber, as I said earlier. Having a difference of opinion is one thing, but to try to demean people and mischaracterize circumstances, there really isn't a place for that.
I'm going to combine two cards here. "A positive interaction between the mayor and council is vital. Why did you or did you not find it necessary to attend yesterday's mayoral forum? And if you did attend, what were your thoughts on yesterday's event?"
I did attend, actually, and I enjoyed it. One thing, when you have a forum like this, it's very hard to distinguish yourself. I felt bad for them. There was an awful lot of people up there, and it's very hard to distinguish yourself from the other guy that just said exactly what the most reasonable answer to the question was. So I thought that they all accounted for themselves really well, and so, I mean, that's pretty much it.
What are your thoughts on outright campaigning during city council meetings? Do you think this is an issue? Is there anything that can or should be done if it is an issue?
Well, I assume that there are things that can be done. The mayor is the person that runs the meeting, so it does seem to me as though it's an inappropriate thing to actively campaign, so it's just inappropriate.
All right, now we're going to move on to some city-related issues and topics. Let's start with the budget. "What would you do differently, if anything, in working with the city manager to develop the city budget well in advance of the deadline to avoid the 11th-hour revisions and adjustments that surrounded the budget and millage increase that we experienced this year?"
That's a tough question, because I had done what I would do again in closed meetings. I didn't do this in public forums, but in closed meetings, to go there, to suggest that we should be moving forward, we should be seeing results in some sketched-in versions of budgets, so as a council person, you don't -- you're not their boss in the fact that you can dictate the way that they've got to conduct themselves, so you're sort of a hostage to them performing in the way that you believe that they should be performing.
Sticking with working with the city manager. "Over the course of the past year, the city manager has been directed to address a number of items and has failed to meet the established deadlines in some of the cases. How would you work with the city manager to ensure those types of requirements and obligations are met on a timely basis?"
I'm a big proponent of checklist. I would suggest strongly that she gets a really, really big checklist, because it was very frustrating. I mean, this has been an ongoing circumstance, unfortunately, with this particular manager, that you get the impression that things are being looked into, things are being resolved or moving forward at the very least, only to find out that it's essentially nothing has actually happened. It's very hard to take. I mean, the only thing that I can say is that we just had an evaluation at our last meeting, and it wasn't a sparkling moment, so it was pretty much roundly suggested by -- there was two players that had given what most of us thought were artificial responses. Everybody else was pretty much had had their fill, so.
Switching topics a little bit. "What role do you see city council taking in bringing arts and cultural activities to the area?"
Well, this council has been remarkably supportive of that whole thing, and we have the good fortune of having some people that are quite gifted, quite committed, and very creative about the diversity of what kind of activities they're providing to the community. I mean, some things, you know, the sustainable arts. There's been three or four things that were just remarkable, and not things that were the ordinary, you know, showing pictures and things, which, when they do that, it's still startlingly nice. But they've come up with the -- I forgot what it's called, like yarns and -- I wish that Linda was here.
Textiles.
Yes, the textile shows, yes. I mean, it's just something that you don't think at first blush in the cultural arts aspect of it, but when you see their presentation, I mean, it clearly fits well into that category.
All right, next question, and as far as the time, keep yourself with the time to wrap up what you're saying when you see the stop. We'll give you a little bit of overtime. But overall, do you think the city is going in the right direction or the wrong direction, and why?
We've certainly got our challenges in front of us. The retirement program has kind of been an unwieldy thing that needs to be addressed. We just simply don't have -- it was actually predicated on, when we were the fastest-growing community in the state, there wasn't the challenge of wondering whether or not we'd be able to meet our obligations long-term because we were growing so quickly. The township's success in precluding us from expanding by annexation into their area, which was a historic perspective of communities our size with townships around them with vast stretches of undeveloped land, that would have been the normal progression as our needs would end up coming forward, we would grow into that community. They stopped us from being able to do that while -- this isn't --
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Yeah, this doesn't make any sense to have this minute thing. I'll tell you quite honestly, serious discussions take serious discussion, so the idea of trying to put some real category into a little one-minute synopsis and expect that you're actually going to get any real information is a little bit unrealistic, in my view. If you had -- if we had the seven people that were here yesterday, it's a little more unwieldy to try to have everybody speak at length, but no honest discussion about real topics is capsulated in just a couple of sentences.
Let's talk about the police a little bit. "Frequently, the South Lion Police Department provides free services for city events such as Pumpkin Fest. Do you think the city should charge the event holders for their provided services to better manage our expenses? Why or why not?" And let me clarify, this is not directed at Pumpkin Fest directly, but --
No, I understand.
That was -- that's an example.
And actually, Pumpkin Fest is sort of an unusual circumstance unto itself, because Pumpkin Fest pays for the people that are actually providing security inside of the tent during the events, but it's the at-large thing that the city is just pulling out of their own pocket to cover Pumpkin Fest. I do, I think that it's important that the police end up being involved, that community safety is their charge, so if you have events in the community, they should end up being able to be on-site and able to respond. We have, this year, I think it's the fourth-safest city in the state, so medium-sized city. That comes by the fact that our PD is so actively engaged in trying to conduct -- to make sure that everybody is handling themselves appropriately. The idea that we would not fund that doesn't make any sense to me, so.
All right. I'm going to actually read two questions, because I think they actually go in different directions, but they're both related to public safety as well. So again, if you need to take a little bit more time to talk about it, feel free. First question is, "Since public safety takes approximately 60% of the city's budget, what is your stance on looking at a millage for public safety services?" Another question that was submitted, which was apparently asked at the yesterday's forum, but what are your thoughts on the police and fire departments being dissolved, which had been mentioned in ask-meetings?
The millage question, actually, we had a circumstance when people were asking for SRO, the policeman at the high school, and I had suggested that maybe that should end up being something that would be on a ballot to find out if there's interest in them providing financing for something like that. So I think that you entertain every possibility for a discussion piece at the very least. I don't think that anything is out of the boundaries. Information and knowledge and understanding are the keys to end up coming to the best conclusion on prosecuting any kind of services that are delivered to the community, so. And the idea of dissolving the police force, irrespective of the, you know, the people that are entertaining the idea of Sheriff Spokane County being in charge instead of our PD, we're always going to have a police force in the event that someone saw some way that we could -- I would like to see a pitch from Oakland County to find out what the disparity between what their costs would end up being and what our costs existing would be, to find out whether or not there's any kind of an interest in looking into that any further. We had provided a pitch for Lion Township. This was back when Rod Cook was the city manager and Lloyd was already as the police chief. Lloyd had put together a pitch to try to give to the township, and his suggestion had been that they could find some real savings by allowing the city to be the provisioner of their PD. They would never entertain the idea of even a discussion on that, and I just thought that that was kind of short-sighted, because it would either reveal that they could have gotten a better deal, or it would have revealed that there was some costs that hadn't been accounted for. But you don't know unless you have the conversation. So I'd like to end up -- I want as much information as is available to be able to base any kind of especially something as important as the decision of our public safety.
Moving on to another topic, dealing with city expenses. "In an effort to decrease our expenses, perhaps it is time to curtail city leaf collection and grass mowing in the Brails to Trails area, parks, et cetera, and contract out those duties to the other companies. The city's current trash collector will already pick up the leaves if they're backed. This would potentially reduce city payroll, retirement costs, and vehicle maintenance and operating costs. Do you favor an approach like this, and/or do you have other suggestions where expenses could possibly be reduced in order to better align with our revenues?"
The leaf collection in particular, it had been suggested by Bob Martin that $60,000, it's like between $55,000 and $60,000 for a leaf pickup during the course of the year. He thought that that could be pared down significantly by rather than us paying the place that we dump now, which is in just across the border on Martindale Road, or Griswold, excuse me, in the township. Just taking the stuff to Volunteer Park in the undeveloped area and dumping there would save substantial savings. So I think that we need to entertain that. I think it's a service that most people in the community enjoy quite a bit, so I would hate to end up relieving them of that ability to get the benefit, especially, you know, I know that we've got some private developments that don't get to enjoy that service unless, say Colonial Acres, were to rake all their leaves out to Pontiac Trail, that may not end up happening, so it's pretty unrealistic. But nonetheless, there are a couple of But nonetheless, there, there are a couple of private entities out there that don't get the same enjoyment of that service, but all the residential areas in neighborhoods and things find that to be quite a big perk as a product of living in this community. So like I said, I, I would really want to know what the real costs, now that we're dumping in Volunteer Park, as opposed to paying somebody to dispose our leaves.
Okay. Your answer, they may, they may have prompted this question.
Okay.
What do you believe led to Bob Martin's leaving for Lion Township? And how do we go about replacing the gaping hole that he left behind?
Well, that hole would be very difficult to fill, not just simply because of his technical expertise, his license, his, he was just a great guy. He was the guy that bent over backwards and found a solution to virtually any challenge that was being unmet. The reason he left was quite clear. He didn't have to watch our meetings terribly long to find out that the acrimony in those, those meetings was more than he was willing to, to put up with. So it was a terrible loss to us because he was such an asset and finding a replacement is going to be very difficult in that he was, you know, the, the multitasker guy with DPW and water wastewater being his responsibilities. We've got a, Ron Brock is the, is kind of leading the charge in the DPW and he's a lovely man and very capable and I'm sure that that department will end up being, being fine. And as a matter of fact, water wastewater. The department itself is quite capable of handling all the business that needs to take there, or take place there, save for the fact that we don't have a license holder and there's submissions to the state that are mandatory to operate a wastewater treatment plant as well as a water treatment plant. So those guys are at a real premium right now, so that's going to be quite a challenge to fill. And especially in light of our, our last meeting, we had made, made the decision that we need to get out of our existing retirement with, which is a defined benefit, to move to a defined contribution, what they call it, a defined contribution plus, which essentially has a 457, which is a governmental version of a 401K, as being supplement to their regular contribution retirement.
All right. Here's a question that was brought up yesterday that, excuse me, tell us your best joke.
Now, this, this will go over as well as me doing magic tricks up here. I laugh crazily when anyone tells a joke. Unfortunately, I never can construct them properly. I'm always laughing in the middle of it or revealing it where the punchline is at the wrong place and things, so. I mean, the level of my, my joke telling is, let's see, what is it? Why was five afraid of six? Because seven, eight, nine. You know, that's about the level of my joke telling. So, I'm sorry about that.
For the most part, I can usually remember one joke at a time, so. Okay. All right. I'm guessing this might have been spurred by our talk earlier about the city manager, but what type of project management tools are used to organize and track projects and plans? And do you have any ideas on this?
Well, once again, my, my favorite thing is checklists. I've always been a proponent of that. It's, it's one of those things, when you have a document that's sitting in, in raw form that is just an assembly of basic accomplishments that you know are going to have to be a part of concluding something successfully, I think that that's the easiest tool to, to simplify everything, you know, not software and all kinds of sophisticated things. If you, if you can accomplish it with doing that, I think that's wonderful, but it's not necessary. You need to break things down into simple steps that move from where you are to where you want to go. It's really pretty fundamental.
Okay. What, what about the shopping center north of the railroad tracks on the north end of town? What, what can the city, do the city council, the city administration do to, to help facilitate its redevelopment and what, what should the city do, if anything, as far as that commercial area on the north end of town?
Is this at 11 Mile or at the, where the Salvation Army is?
It's by Salvation Army.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, by the railroad tracks.
Well, I mean, those guys, Salvation Army, I don't, actually, it's really funny how infrequently I find myself driving across railroad tracks on Pontiac Trail anymore. I go years where that's my route daily and then all of a sudden I end up finding myself not going through there more than like once a month. So I really haven't been tracking what's been going on over there as strongly as maybe I should have, but it, it seemed as though Salvation Army seemed to be enjoying some success. It seemed as though the, the dentists, there were some, some things that seemed to be holding their own over there quite well and there are storefronts available. In all honesty, I was always hoping that Providence would want to relocate over there, have it be sort of a medical complex with proximity to Colonial Acres and all that. It seemed like kind of a natural to me to make it as simple and, you know, as straightforward as possible.
You could roll over.
Drive across the street, go see the guy you gotta see, you know? So unfortunately, that hasn't taken place. I, I don't really know. As I said, Providence, I've, I've heard in the wind that Providence is looking to relocate and they want a, a presence in South Lion, but not necessarily in the location they're at right now. So that may end up still holding some, some promise over there. Save for that, I'm, I love capitalism, I love what the free markets do and I like the idea of the city creating an environment where capitalism can flourish. I'm not a big fan of the city deciding winners and losers. I, I think if you want to end up being a capitalist and an entrepreneur, you come up with your plan, you come up with your financing plan and you work it. The idea of us being supplemental to make sure that you're kept whole, us as a city throwing in tax dollars isn't something that I'm terribly fond of. I have given some consideration to the idea, there's going to be some redevelopment coming in our near future and there has been talk of, there are abatements available for commercial development. I'm still kind of on the fence, but I could entertain the, well, given the right, given everything fell in place, I could entertain the idea of a couple of years of a mild version of an abatement just as an enticement. And I would hope that the first guy that came, if they were able to enjoy that, we could pull it from the table. That would be sort of the way to proof out that we are a good place to invest in and people with, with wallets will end up seeing these opportunities around the community for redevelopment in other sections of town. We have an enormous market. We've grown as, as a city to create our own smaller market, but now with the townships growing at the rates that they are around us, we're really aplomb. And, and with a historic downtown, that really gives us a great deal more allure to an awful lot of developers. So I would rather we end up creating an environment where they can do their thing, stay out of their way, they have to end up being compliant with building codes and all that kind of stuff, with the master plan, but save for that, I would rather that they provide their own financing for their own enjoyment.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna combine these next two questions because I think they kind of go together. One question was just, what about the deficit, the budget? And the related question is, what impact do frivolous lawsuits have on our budget?
Well, the deficit, we are being led to believe that we won't have, I mean, we're going to have a deficit in long-term liabilities for MERS and things of that nature. That's something we're on a plan right now. And although this will sound dramatic, we're on a 22-year-old plan, or 22-year plan to be able to, to flesh out our obligation that we have right now. That seems like a long time, but it's actually, when you're talking about retirement plans, when people have careers of 30 years, that is not an extraordinary number. People keep making these allusions to the idea of solving our unfunded liability in a matter of years and that is simply not going to happen and is completely unrealistic. To accomplish that, we would have to forego virtually every other service in the, the community for years. So that's, that's just more fear mongering and trying to paint a really mischaracterized position for what the city's circumstances are. I'm sorry, what was the second part of that?
Dealing with frivolous lawsuits.
Oh, I'm unaware of what that might be alluding to, quite honestly. So I hope we don't have to.
All right. And we're getting close to the end of questions. Jump back to business a little bit, but in your ideal scenario, yeah, a realistic scenario, what are three businesses, either specific businesses or types of businesses that you want to see come into the city?
I don't spend an awful lot of time in that realm. Obviously, the, the ideas of, when we moved here and it was right at the onset of Eagle Heights and, and some new development like that, over time, it was realized when Trotters Point started here, it was terrific in that people that had aspired to bigger things and were starting to make bigger paychecks and that, and wanted to end up growing into a bigger home, they didn't have to leave the boundaries of South Lion to be able to enjoy that. We've got a number of subs that are on that par or excel beyond that par, where people have some disposable income that they would like to be able to come to a restaurant in their own city that's a little bit more upscale than what we've provided right, or up till this time. So I think that a lot of people would end up seeing some more restaurant opportunities being one of them. A major sports franchise maybe here would be helpful, but in all real reality though, I, I think I would like to see something that was a little bit more entertainment-driven. That's a, a difficult thing to, to really want, only in that because it, it does create a great deal of ancillary traffic that's a, you know, a problem for the regular residents, but I would like something that's a little bit closer than having to go to Ann Arbor or to Auburn Hills to be able to see some, some big league entertainment, so.
If you could champion just one issue while serving this next term on council, what would it be and how would you go about accomplishing it?
There, there are a number of very critical and important things coming up, but I think if I had, if those things were being handled appropriately, I'd love to find a way, to find some way to fund the development of Volunteer Park. I think that's going to be really a necessary component. We have an awful lot of junior leagues of football, baseball, soccer, hockey, you know, the whole gambit is represented in this community. So it'd be nice to find some way that we could afford amending those, our 20, well, I guess it's still, let's see, like 70 acres that still exist undeveloped over there. So it'd be nice to be able to find some way to, to take care of some of those needs and to beautify the, the community, so.
And with that, I think we're gonna wrap it up with that. And so now you have one minute for your conclusion statement.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the library, I'd like to thank the Herald, and I'd especially like to thank the theater for allowing us this wonderful venue and this opportunity to see the remodel that they have conducted in here and the seating. I can attest to its being very, very comfortable, so you shouldn't blant at the idea of coming to a, see a movie down here anymore. I, I still miss the old days of watching the film melt on the, the screen and get the, the weekly yuck when we were watching, but everything that they've got here is top drawer now and it's really quite a compliment to the community. I'm hoping that people have paid attention longer than simply tonight to realize that I'm a guy that actually gives a darn, I do my homework and I pay attention to the circumstances that, that drive decision-making in our, our community. And I hope you can see yourself to the booth on November 7th and pull my lever.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I greatly appreciate it. As I said, don't forget, November 7th is the election. These videos from tonight will likely air at 5 o'clock every day up to the election starting on Wednesday. Yesterday's mayor forum is airing daily at 8:00 PM and the videos can also be found on the Salem South Lion District Library. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.